Tonight is Monday, October 22nd at 7:30 PM. And I'm calling this meeting to order. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple items, personnel items in the table file.
We have a couple personnel items, appointment and resignation items that we need to add to the consent agenda.
Great. If there are no objections, we will add those to the consent agenda as we move forward. We are on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? No? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from our board meeting on October 8th.
Motion by Carrie.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Announcement and recognition.
Okay, and I have a few this evening. Again, as we just finished with the board and myself, as well as Principal Joel Lehrer, an opportunity to meet our six commended students and our one semifinalist for National Merit Scholarship. And have an opportunity for them to talk a little bit about themselves and the teacher that they really felt had made a great impression on them. And also, I got a chance for the teachers to talk a little bit about each of the students. It's always a very positive piece and one that we really appreciate the opportunity to recognize those folks. The second announcement that I have this evening, and I see Hannah is prepared, we want to announce and recognize the National, excuse me, the Northfield Public Schools Community Services Program, Connected Kids, which was one of four in the state to be honored by the Mentoring Partnership of Minnesota at a celebration on October the 14th. Several of us attended that event. Two Metro and two Greater Minnesota mentoring programs received the Bob Dayton Quality Mentoring Award for committing to high-quality mentoring opportunities for youth and volunteer mentors and for meeting the criteria in a specific category. Qualifying in the awards innovation category, Connected Kids was recognized for demonstrating program stability, strong management, operations, evaluation, and design features. And so Hannah, why don't you have Linda Oto and others come up that you want to have and talk to us a little bit about that award.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to share this award with you. We started Connected Kids back in 2004 when the Northfield Mentoring Coalition had written a grant to the Department, U.S. Department of Education for mentoring grant. And, you know, we had to learn a lot about that and get it going. And here we are, eight years later, serving an average of 100 young people and their mentors every year. Some of our mentors have been with their students since the very beginning. So they started in elementary school, went through middle school, went through high school, have watched their mentees graduate, and remain very devoted to each other. So it's been just a wonderful experience. And it really is to the credit of the people who had, who took on the challenge of developing a mentoring program and making sure that we have always lived by the best practices. The award that we're going to see a bit about here in a second is the Bob Dayton Award, given by the Minnesota or the Mentoring Partnership of Minnesota. That was started by Mr. Dayton back seven, eight years ago. And, is that correct?
About 14.
About 14, sorry about that. And it really recognizes both the quality of the program and the innovation that we have supported in our program throughout all of these years. After four years with the Department of Education grant, we then got a U.S. Department of Juvenile Justice or Department of Justice Award in the Office of Juvenile Justice. And that was when Linda told me she couldn't possibly write a great big federal grant like that. And of course, we got the award, one of 13 in the country. So it was a pretty big deal. There are tremendous people who help us in this program. Linda is the coordinator. She is supported by Cheryl Strike, who is the mentoring specialist. And at Greenville now, Laura Burdell works as a link there in the program. In the past, we have been able to support additional links, but when we, when all of our grants expired, we were able to take the program under the community services budget. But that meant paring back on the staffing a little bit. So now Linda and Cheryl move around to all the different buildings every day. So we thank everyone who's ever had anything to do with the mentoring program, Connected Kids. It's just been a delight to watch over the years. And when you see those matches, we'll see an example in a minute, you can really appreciate the commitment that adults and some of our high school students, who are peer mentors to young children, to the commitment that they make. So we'll look at the video and then we want to share the award with you. And Dr. Richardson and Ellen, we need to get a picture. So thank you very much.
To have been thought about and even just considered for this was just really validating and really made me feel, you know, it's not about my work, it's about the work we do for the kids.
Well, I think for us, it's validation that, number one, as a community, we have figured out kind of the secret of coming together to address a problem for kids, and it's making a difference. I guess it's just, it's just a very gratifying feeling because my sense is, I know that that connection is occurring.
Bottom line is, we're working with kids. And the kids we work with are struggling, and they deserve the best that they can have. And that requires us to be the best that we can be. We're not perfect. There's ways we can improve every single day. And I think that they deserve that of us. And then the volunteers that spend their time doing this deserve it. And then we also represent the school district, and it's a quality school district. And we need to step up and be part of that. And you just can't be complacent when you're dealing with kids' lives. What we've been able to do is give kids somebody who will listen to them and keep them in school, make them feel important. We're graduating virtually all of the kids who are mentored. And one of the things that just kind of gives me goosebumps is the fact that their mentors stay in their lives after they graduate.
So congratulations to Linda and the staff of Connected Kids. And we appreciate all the support that you have given us for all the years we've been doing this and the many years that will continue.
This is a complicated award. You handed it to us. He said, careful.
Be careful in Britain. It's not in one piece.
And as we understand, each bowl that was given that night is handmade. Each one is an original. They're made by an artist in Duluth.
So hold on to it.
Aaron has the camera. So why don't we get?
Well, first, I just want to add my thanks. Yeah, Hannah would do all the time. But I just want to add my thanks to the school district, the school board, for supporting us, for making it possible. It would not be possible without everybody, all the administration, all the faculty, teachers, everybody, top to bottom. Special thanks to Dr. Richardson, Ellen Iverson, and Hannah, who joined us at that event, the banquet and awards. And it was, you know, there's not enough words to say how meaningful that was, both professionally and personally.
Sorry.
It's a financial issue. We're trying to figure out if this is too right. We need to spin websites. And so that our communications is up to be.
Doing the job. She's bossing around already. So this is a little more elongated than our normal announcement process, but now we're ready to do our second presentation. There was a local presentation of the MCEA Outstanding Organization Award that went to Growing Up Healthy. That was done last week. The district is a partner in Growing Up Healthy. Janet Louis Smith and Erin Mayberry as our MCEA Region Five Director will help in setting the stage for the presentation.
Thank you. As Dr. Richardson just said, I do serve as the Region Five representative on the Minnesota Community Education Association's Board of Directors. And it is my honor to present Rice County Growing Up Healthy with the Minnesota Community Education Association's 2012 Outstanding Community Organization Award. Rice County Growing Up Healthy embodies the core principles by which community education exists. Begun in 2007, Growing Up Healthy was founded on the belief that for people to become integral partners in their community, they need to provide their own leadership and community activism. I am happy to present this award to Janet Louis Smith.
Thank you.
Then we also have a couple of additional announcements. And first one is just a reminder for board members. And the problem we're running into with this is this happens to run into being exactly at the same time that you will all be on stage, or at least most of you will be on stage, as some of our board members will be participating in the Mayor's Youth Council activities as far as the candidate forum. But would encourage other board members, if you're available, we'd like to have you attend the annual bus driver appreciation breakfast that will be held this morning at, excuse, not this morning, this Friday morning at Bridgewater. The drivers will be stopping in around 8:20 after their last route. However, they will be floating in for the next 30 or 40 minutes after that. So if you have an opportunity to stop by and say hi, or maybe you want to say hi before you come over to the activity, that would be great. Benjamin Bus Company basically does a fantastic job in providing safe transportation for our students and has done so for many years. And this is just an opportunity for us to say thank you on an annual basis. And so hope that maybe you would be able to join us for a little bit to recognize them. Also, Bridgewater will be celebrating Grandparents' Day on Tuesday, November the 20th. And grandparents, our special guests, are invited to join their grandchild or grandchildren for 30 minutes of play on their favorite board game. So another opportunity at Bridgewater for that activity. So those are the announcements that I have this evening.
Lots of fun mixed things. Board members, do you have other announcements or recognition? Hard to top that list. All right. We are on to the first item for discussion report, which is the Prairie Creek Community School Annual Report. And I believe Simon Tyler is going to be presenting. And board members, in your table file, there, or on your table, there was a packet.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for welcoming me in tonight to give you a report on last year at Prairie Creek. And before I start, I just want to express my gratitude to the board and to Dr. Richardson and his administrators for the continuing support for our program. It's something we greatly value. And during this past year, my first year as director at Prairie Creek, there's been many times when we've picked up a phone or sought advice and the board and the administration has been really willing and welcoming with their responses. So thank you for that. I've got a slideshow for you, which is hopefully fairly brief, and it will hopefully keep me on track. So I'm not too verbose for you tonight. You've already had a busy evening, I see that. And what it is, is basically a summary of the salient points of the more, the more complex annual report that we publish for the state and the authorizer each year. So I'm going to move through these slides pretty quickly. There'll be time for questions at the end, or if you want to jump in with questions, that's fine as well. Okay? Let's see if I can get this thing to work. Ah, there we go. Our mission remains unchanged. We're a community school. We're a child-centered school, a progressive school, and we aim to make the world a better place. And that, those four pillars of the school mission have been in place now for almost 30 years. Next year will be our 30th year as Prairie Creek Community School. A little bit about myself. Last year, as I mentioned, was my first year as the director of Prairie Creek School. I'll be completing my principal's license year this, hopefully this December, if my portfolio is all put together on time. And so I'm looking forward to that. Prior to being administrator at Prairie Creek, I was the director at Art Tech, which now, of course, Arcadia School. And prior to that, as part of my teaching experience, I also taught at Prairie Creek. So last year was a great experience for me going back to a school I've already had a lot of great connections and memories with. Our school demographics is just a comparison from last year to give you a little bit of a flavor. This is actually our, last year was our third year since the school was expanded from 120 to 180 students. So the expansion actually happened while I was gone from the school. So that's been a good experience for me, coming back and working with a new building and a larger group of students. Last year's enrollment was, uh, fall at 180. As you can see, the rest of these key numbers are pretty similar from year to year. We have a three and reduced lunch hovering around the 20% mark, and we anticipate about the same again this year. And you can see our percentages there for student of color, no English language learners, and our special education numbers tend to fluctuate between sort of 10 and 15%. Last couple of years have been closer to 10%. Each year, we conduct a parent engagement and satisfaction survey. And the feedback we get from our families is always very positive, and last year was no different. As you see, the four key domains of our survey there, that we have a high rating in terms of parent satisfaction. And there's a more detailed summary of that survey in the annual report. The structure of the school remains, has remained the same since we expanded. We have nine multi-age classrooms, which are organized in teams, three K-1 classes, three 2-3s, and three 4-5s. The multi-age component is a very important part of our program and mission. And the teaming is also very important as well. Increasingly, we've structured our schedule to accommodate time for the three teachers in each team to work together for several hours each week. And if you like, that's our version of a PLC in which those teachers from the same grades get together on a regular basis for curriculum planning assessment and reflection. We have three specialist teachers, two special education teachers, and as I said, we have 180 students in the nine classrooms, giving a teacher ratio of 20 to 1. We also support, we invest some of our general education budget in teaching assistance as well. So we have a total of five teaching assistants, three of whom work each morning in the K-1 classrooms. We devote a little extra staffing to the early years, and one teaching assistant supporting each of the two older teams. Whoops, and I just turned it off. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Academic goals. Last year's academic goal was that we would use the work sampling model to track the proficiency of students in mathematical thinking. Our goal was to have at least 70% of the students on average be proficient. We fell slightly short of this goal, with 65% of our students scoring proficiency. I'll get into our academic goals for next year a little bit as part of this presentation. And you'll see a little shift for us from, although we keep, we will continue to use the work sampling model as an internal assessment tool, we are going to set goals this year around the math MCAs and the reading MCAs. We also had a science goal, and we had a big focus last year in our curriculum on environmental education. So we set a goal around scientific thinking with a proficiency of 66% of Prairie Creek students in the scientific thinking domain, again, using the work sampling data. And we had 89% of our students scoring proficient in this. As a sort of correlation to that, we also, of course, take the fifth grade MCA, and we had 86.7% proficiency on the fifth grade MCA this year, which is an interesting parallel with the work sampling proficiency rates. As far as the MCAs go, as a public school, of course, we're accountable to the standardized state assessments. And what you have here is a summary of how our students in grade three through, three through five performed in reading, math, and science. And as you can see, we were above state average in reading and science, but below state average in math. A couple of things, I think is really important for the board to know and for, that we generally try and share when we talk about standardized assessments, is we have a very small cell size of just 30 students in each grade. So it's, it can be difficult for us to create meaningful trend data by proficiency. So what we've been looking at this year is, can we develop goals related to student growth as a more stable predictor of how our students are doing by standardized assessments? And I'll talk about that a bit more in a moment. And as part of the data, we're also trying to give our authorizer for their reporting. As you can see, the math scores were, unlike the other two, below the state average. Couple of things we've looked in regard to that. We did choose to take the assessment by paper instead of online, which restricted us to just the one assessment. And also, it's a different way of taking the test where the students can't have their questions read to them. We're going to take a look at that this year, and we will probably take the assessments online, along with most other districts in the state as a medium for doing that. We're also looking at other strategies for improving our math instruction as well, and I will, I will come to that now. Here's the growth measures I was talking about. As far as our reporting to the authorizer and giving feedback to Dr. Richardson, we look at the growth measures in Northfield and State, the students who are making medium or high growth on the MCA assessments, which again, for us, is a fairly small sample size because it's just our sixth fourth and fifth graders that we can look at for that data. But as you can see, as opposed to the proficiency assessments on math under 2011, 12, our growth actually improved from the year before. So we've been looking at how we can set a growth goal for the school in reading and math, using that medium or high standard, and hopefully create some trend data that we can build from going forward. Our accountability plan for this year is where we put those targets in place. So for math, we set our goal around medium and high growth to increase from 79.6% to 83%. Then we have to really break down the data and look to, look at the number of students we have to influence in order to affect that change. Likewise, with reading, from 69.5 to 74.6% measured by the MCAs. Sitting under, beneath that MCA goal, because we have such a small sample size and the MCA goals really only hit our fourth and fifth graders, we're also using our work sampling data from a K through five. And this year, we've decided that we're going to set a mean average goal using the work sampling as well, with a point six increase across all grades, really to study our work sampling tool, which we, has real value for us in terms of the assessment data. It gives us beyond just reading and math. It does look at all the areas of the academic program and social development for kids. But also to see if our benchmarks for growth, based on the MCAs, show a correlation with our growth data from work sampling. So we've set a baseline of point six growth for each grade. Work sampling measures students on a, are not yet an in-process and proficient base, basis. So the point six reflects the fact that some students are starting already at an in-process or proficient to the beginning of the year, so we can look at meaningful growth. Now, academic goals, we always establish two non-academic goals to support our academic program. These are developed with the staff, as a learning community. This year, we're focusing, you know, diversity and cultural awareness and health and wellness. As you probably saw from our demographic data, we're not a particularly diverse community in tradition. It hasn't been so either. So we wanted to take a look at that, plus our outreach for enrollment, making students in the community of all backgrounds aware of our program. We also wanted to do some examination of our own diversity at the staff level, our own biases, our curriculum, and how responsive we are to the diverse world in which we live. And this also touches on, I think, one of the key points of our mission, to make the world a better place in a, in a broader view as well. As far as health and wellness goes, we have a wellness policy, which we feel is, this is a good time to review and revise in the light of a lot of the initiatives we're getting around PE and health and wellness and nutrition of students. And we're also looking to develop new means to support staff wellness. Our teachers, like all teachers, work hard and work under considerable, considerable stress, and we really want to set some direction for how we can support staff well-being as Give you just a quick sense of some of the innovative things that have been happening in our program. In terms of technology, we've installed smart boards in different areas of the program in the past year, in the special education resource rooms, and also in our Spanish classroom, which also functions as a meeting area for the school. Staff are piloting the use of iPads, iPads as well. And not at the sophisticated level that's happening in the Northfield School District yet, but in our small environment, we're able to look at how iPads work in a thematic and project-based setting. And there's some interesting staff initiatives going on around in regard to that. We also incorporate the use of the Alexandria Electronic Library Catalog System as well. We have a, a small but well-stocked library, and we've found that the electronic system gives our families access through our website to the materials that are in there. Other innovative programs, we pride ourselves on our green initiatives. And typically, in any given year at Prairie Creek, there's something happening in the outdoor environment. In this past year, we, we created this beautiful butterfly garden that you can see there and installed the rain barrels as well. So that now sits alongside our solar panel and our composting program, as recent green initiatives. And we're also looking to construct what we're calling an outdoor classroom, which will essentially be a pavilion and storage area where the students can take their learning outside. And we can also store PE equipment that the kids use outside as well. The plan is to have that built by the end of this year. Our boards, our landlords are supporting us with the cost of that program, and we've had permission granted for it from Eureka Township. Innovative practice, I wanted just to talk a little bit about evaluation. I've shared with you, you know, the hard, data-driven piece of how our, our program is assessed and how we give feedback to the community and to MDE. But we also feel in this age of accountability that the other piece of our mandate as a charter school is, is innovation and how we evaluate students as well. And sitting alongside the math and reading MCA focus, we really seek alternative ways to give feedback to families on student growth. Besides the work sampling, we have three conferences set aside each year for goal-setting progress and summary reporting, so those six non-cam type days, so that the parents and kids can have meaningful time with the teachers. We also provide written narratives about the children. These are lengthy, two-page documents. One's a mid-year in-progress document that the teachers write about the children for the families, which cover all areas of academic growth and as well as social and emotional development of the child. And then that's followed up by a summary narrative at the end of the year, which really gives a reflection on how the, the year's journey went for that child. So the narratives have been a part of the school's history now for almost 30 years, and we really value them and find our families value them to give that sort of holistic picture of how the child's developing. It's a lot of time for the teachers and a lot of work, but it's something we really Other initiatives this year, we always have a strong arts synthesis. Last year, we had a True Colors Old School of Arts Event to give families a sense of the arts process, so they could come in and create art alongside their children. We've done something a little different with our specialist list this year. We've opened up really long, extensive periods of time for visual arts classes. And that was initiative of Angie Ekin, our art teacher. So some of the children have as long as 80 minutes to really go deep into the visual arts process. We've also had a dance residency last year with the Flying Foot Dance Company. They work with children in K through three. And they'll be back this year in the spring to work with our fourth and fifth graders. They're working on something called the Alice Project. And our kids will be performing alongside the Flying Foot professionals at the Creativity Center next spring. So keep an eye out for that. It should be fun. We had a grant last year to, from the Minnesota Historical Society, and that's given us an opportunity to really dig down and archive our school historical opportunity to really dig down and archive our school's historical documents. A follow-up grant from the Historical Society this year is going to focus more on collecting the stories of the long-aimed families connected to the school and that'll be part of our buildup towards next year's thirtieth year anniversary. So we're excited for that work. Challenges and opportunities, we've taken a good look at the math, obviously from looking at the standardized test data, math was the area that stood out as an area of, of growth for us. It's, math's always been an interesting challenge for us at Prairie Creek. We, we do come at it from a more progressive viewpoint as befits our, as befits our mission with an emphasis on developing the exploration side of math, the project side of math. But we also recognize that foundation math skills are critical to the development of a mathematician as well, and that's more what's being assessed in the standardized test. So this year, looking at the data from the new, new multiple measurement rating, the information about proficiency, growth, achievement gap, we've decided to develop a math plan, which we will share with our board and with our community, which will really focus on how curricular goals are mapped out at each TE level, now we have these defined teams, our own local evaluation benchmarks as well as the state benchmarks. Title-one interventions, we now have a three-reduced population that gives us a small amount of title-one funding. So we're focusing our energy in the K-one years, in particular in the area of math, how we can engage our parents with what we're doing with math and how they can partner with us. Looking at growth goals as opposed to just proficiency goals and seeing how we can incorporate some of these new technologies to support student use in the area of math. So that plan will be shared with our board later this fall and then with our community. In terms of themes and projects, which are a big part of our emergent curriculum, again, and as you've probably seen, there's a theme here, the balance of accountability and innovation is always what we're trying to do at Prairie Creek. And to try and give more information to our community on how we manage themes, how we integrate science, social studies, projects into an emergent curriculum, we're piloting a new curriculum map format, which is essentially mapping all the different themes we do K through five over a two-year period and how they correlate to the state standards. And this is something the staff want to work collaboratively in our, our learning community meetings. Staff development, our PLC system is such that we meet on every Wednesday afternoon for two hours and as your small picture there shows, it's the staff working together in guided professional development. There's a pretty extensive list in the full report of the professional development that we undertook last year. And typically, the main focus of it relates to our academic and non-academic goals. I have one slide for you on finance, just to give you a sense of how our fund balance is going. We've taken very seriously the, the holdback situation with the state and I'm very fortunate as the incoming direct to, a director to have come into a really healthy financial situation. The, my, the administrator, Caroline Jones, before me, was a very good steward of our funding and it's, it's my role and the board's role to continue there. And you can see from the fund balance predictions of our FY twelve audit that we're looking at now an increase to a thirty-three point six percent fund balance, which seems, seems a lot, but the reality is that's what we need to maintain above thirty percent in order not to have to borrow to manage the holdback, which is our primary goal, not to have to borrow money. And also with our five-year forecast looking at staffing costs, we're anticipating somewhere in the thirty to thirty-five percent fund balance range is what we're going to need to maintain. So we're on track for that. And that concludes my summary and if you have questions, please fire away.
Need a minute to organize.
Thank you for the report. And I, I was surprised to see, I would have expected that science and math both would be high. And what do you attribute your great success in the science?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question and it's one that obviously we've been thinking about too. I've got a couple of thoughts about this, Carrie, but I am cautious with these conjectures about test scores for us because we're such a small cell size. Talking with the teachers of the fourth and fifth grade and the fifth, the science is just administered to the fifth-grade students, the feedback we get from kids who take that test is that what the kids have, it's an online assessment, they're presented a little scenario. It's essentially a little problem to solve around a science concept. It involves some critical thinking, some reflection, some analyzing of the information that's presented, and then the students have to choose a response. It's a graphic assessment. And our kids generally seem to enjoy taking that one. And one hypothesis we have is it's an inquiry model that fits our approach to science. Obviously, we believe the science content is important, but we tend to come at it more from the perspective of inquiry and critical thinking and, and the scientific method. And of all the MCA assessments that the kids take, I would say that's the one that most aligns with our mission in terms of how we educate kids. That's, that's just a theory, but the last few years of the science assessment, we have generally performed above the state average by some distance. So we'll see if there's a trend around that. The math, on the other hand, we took on paper just once this year. It's a very content-based assessment and we've been looking at our curriculum and how that aligns to that this year because there was such a disparity between our proficiency scores in math and science. Again, you know, I'm cautious with these theories because we're talking about thirty and sixty kids, but there is an interesting pattern there and, and you know, we're, we're curious about that too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anne?
Yeah, I'd like to just know a little bit more about foreign language, Spanish, that you two, and just how the students get put into the Spanish classes and how they progress.
Sure. Well, all the, all the kids take Spanish in kindergarten through fifth grade and our kids have two, a minimum of two, a K through three have two thirty-minute slots a week and our fourth and fifth graders have two forty-minute slots a week. And the way we organize our specials is that the kids are rotating, rotating through music, Spanish and art at the same time in teams. So, but the classroom teachers have time to meet during that time. So the special schedule is designed a little bit to support the classroom teachers. We have a new Spanish teacher this year. His name is John Witt and he's also teaching half-time over at Arcadia. And what he's brought to us is a very exciting immersion Spanish program. He only speaks to the students in Spanish, which has been quite a change for our kids. But so far, the feedback we're getting is, is very positive. At the kindergarten, first grade levels, it's, it's very basic vocabulary, building up to more complex vocabulary, obviously, as the kids get into fourth and fifth grade. There's a reality for us as well that with only an hour's exposure a week, there's a limited amount of acquisition of the language and vocabulary that happens. So we always have a focus on movement and arts connecting with all our specials as well. So as part of John Witt's work, he's doing a lot of movement with the kids. There's a, there's a, a name for this, I think it's TPI, but he'll, he'll correct me if I'm wrong, where the movement of the body aligns to the acquisition of the vocabulary and, and this is what we're looking to build in our program. So he'll be working with our art teacher and music teacher as well to put together some collaborative art performances, so.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Noel?
What is your projected enrollment in the future?
We anticipate staying at a hundred eighty, Noel. Yeah, we currently in kindergarten through first grade have about forty students on our waitlist, so we're able to stay at or close to capacity because of that. We don't anticipate going above a hundred eighty right now for a couple of reasons. It would, it would take a significant expansion beyond the one we've already done. And part of the school mission as well is, as a child-centered school, to keep a class size small. So for this to work for us to stay true to that mission piece, we have to stay at, max our class sizes at twenty, nine classes at twenty.
Thank you, so.
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So I wanted to ask a little bit about the work sampling with the math thinking domain and this is in our bigger report. So I was just trying to, because I understand with the MCA three, the challenges that have, that have come to all schools. So I thought it would be, I'm assuming the work sampling kind of fits more the teaching philosophy.
Yeah.
So can you tell me just a little bit more, I was having a hard time understanding, you're focusing more on growth?
Yeah.
And, and the, I lost my page. The page you had on the growth, I was trying to understand, it's page sixteen. Just really briefly, if, if you were looking differently at the work sampling and you're looking in terms of growth, is there a particularly goal, like is it, is it linked to an effect size for an academic year, like?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we actually had some communication with the administrators of the work sampling program and again, it comes down to our cell size. But what, what we saw as a correlation in the language and you can see that the fifth grade score this past year was a point four-six average growth, which was, was fairly low and actually correlated to our MCA scores in fifth grade as well. But because we have a number of students who are starting at that in-process or even proficient score, to, a, a one would be if you moved all the way from none yet all the way up to proficient. What we, what we were advised was to hit a benchmark across all grades, which depending on the pot of students you have, will show that there's movement from those kids who are starting not yet or in-process for the bend in that year. It's a little bit of an experiment, to be honest with you, Ellen, because we've not used the work sampling in that way before. I had a lot of conversations with Dr. Richardson about this as well and we've really questioned whether the work sampling is going to give us the data to match what we're getting out of the MCA's. We've always stepped back from using tools like the MAP test, which give more convenient growth data, because what we found was that didn't give us information on the personal social, didn't enable us to set goals around PE, health, science and so on. And yet, at the same time, we really want to look at what's happening with our kids in the K-three bend in math and reading before they hit the MCA's. So if you like, this is our, our opportunity to set a baseline and then see how we do. I, I think the, the interesting question will be, are we using enough rigor in how we use this subjective data piece? Because essentially what happens is the teachers will make the determination this fall are not yet in-process or proficient based off local assessments. So we spend a lot of our professional development time studying the work sampling statements, which do align to standards, and then working in teams to see if our local data can match that. It's very difficult though when we're finding that we've got a number of kids in each grade who are starting essentially proficient in that grade level to set a goal more than something like a one, zero point six as a benchmark. I hope that helps.
No, it helps, yeah, it helps a lot. And I guess my second question kind of leads into that, so I was really interested that you were looking more at these growth targets and then kind of setting goals, because one of the things that I was hearing a lot from Prairie Creek parents, that one of the things they really love is the beginning of the year and because we've been, you know, covering the last two months, I think that's what's fresh in people's mind, is that sort of goal-setting conference?
Yeah.
Alluded to it briefly in your report. And I was wondering if you could share just a little bit more about what, what happens and maybe, maybe it uses some of this data or the work sampling narrative?
Sure, sure, that's a great question. Our goal-setting conferences happened about two weeks ago and at that time, the student and the parents sit down with the teacher and together they review the initial data we, we have from the start of the year in regard to literacy, numeracy, but all other local tools as well, such as how the kids doing in regard to habits of mind, what do the students see as, as their goals, what have been, what have we seen in the first four weeks of school in regard to qualities of play, how they interact with other students, how they interact with the community. So there is an academic focus based off our local assessments, but there's also a strong piece of how is the child settling into the multi-age environment and what do we see as challenges around that. But I think the work sampling gives the teachers a framework from which to talk to the academic piece first and foremost in that conversation. But it's, it's, you know, only four weeks into the start of school, so the real academic reporting doesn't start till our January conference.
So are the goals, the goal-setting piece, is that, that's based on the work sampling and?
Um, no, no, it's not, it's not, because by that point, we haven't completed the work sampling data. That was only completed by the teachers last week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready to move on to the second item for the second report, which is the Community Services Site Improvement Plan.
All right, so we have the pleasure of bringing the first site improvement plan to you and we're kind of excited on the things that we can report to you this year. We're, we're going to start out by looking at the past year. What you see here in the picture is a volunteer working at our Adult Basic Education Program. Those classes take place in the second floor level of NCRC and that is a program we do in collaboration with Farmington and Randolph Schools in the Dakota Prairie Adult Basic Ed Consortium. So just an example of how we, we provide programs by working with other organizations. I always like to remind us what the purpose of community education here and, yeah, community services here in Northfield Schools is, and that is to support the learning and participation of adults, youth and children of our community through lifelong learning and recreation, citizen involvement, access to school and community resources and facilities, and we do that by promoting collaboration and partnership. We had two objectives this year. This is the third year, three years that we're reporting on, and we have two objectives, one being marketing and the other having to do with financial stability and they are both very interwoven. If we market better and more aggressively, the assumption is we will see an increase in participation, an increase in people registering for programs and classes and services, and that will have a positive financial impact on the program. So they're very closely related. So what we're looking for here is an increase in community awareness, enrollment and participation in programs and services through more effective marketing. Our emphasis last year included things like using social media for a lot more of our marketing. We sent our enrichment coordinator to a training that specifically focused on social marketing as well as, you know, some other marketing approaches that have been proven through the research done by the learn organization to, you know, be effective in promoting programs. So a couple of examples, we increased the use of emails by sixty-two percent. We started using Facebook. We started using our best customer email system to a much greater degree so that we, and, and then kept track of that, so that we could get a sense of how, how much more were we communicating with our market. You saw the, a part of the K Care eleven feature on mentoring earlier this evening, but there was actually a whole lot more to that story and those are just a couple of our successes there. What we learned was that depending on the program, because there's, you know, we have many fee-based programs, all of our enrichment programs, our childcare programs, our early childhood program, most everything we do is fee-based, not entirely, but a good vast majority of what we do. And the range of enrollment increase was from seven percent to sixty-seven percent. And that shows up in the financial end of things as well. As I've said, we already increased the use of social media and we got a whole lot more coverage from our local media sources, so we appreciate that as well. Working out arrangements with the local newspaper and the local online newspaper, various other sources to have ongoing features. The recreation program, for example, had many feature pages as well as our enrichment programs where there'd be photo stories of kids involved. enrichment programs where there'd be photo stories of, uh, kids involved in programs. Uh, so, for example, we've got some great pictures from the rec program. Um, uh, we, we saw nineteen percent increase in the enrollment. We took on two new programs last year, one being the Ski Club, which had operated as a quasi-school club for, for decades, actually. And, um, it was a delight, uh, to work, uh, with Reber Paulson and, and the crew that puts on that ski program. I'm sure Erin's nodding her head back there because, uh, we think, uh, Reber is Erin's new best friend. Uh, it, it, it was just a wonderful program, but that, of course, increased enrollment as well. And we have a wonderful partnership with the Northfield Skating School, uh, which, again, introduced a whole different level of programming to the recreation program. Uh, our second objective had to do with financial stability. Uh, you know that we had a couple of years where our fund balance was, um, below the line, and that was not comfortable for any of us, especially me. Um, so, uh, through a tremendous amount of work done by all of our coordinators, our program staff, uh, creative thinking, coming up with new ways to raise scholarship funds, uh, all kinds of efforts put together, some big, some small, we've been able to really take that fund balance and that financial stability to a better place. Um, so, the anticipated fund balance for FY twelve is just over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We told you last winter, we thought it might be ninety-two thousand. So it landed in a much better place than we anticipated. And, you know, we watch this every month. Every coordinator reviews the financial reports. I review those. Sarah Boren, who does our financial work, reviews them, and we kept seeing this trend, but we didn't want to count on it, and we didn't want to count on it. Something might change. And, uh, it, it wound up being eight percent of our available revenues. I have said for several years, uh, the best place for us to be is probably at about ten percent. So not much more to go, but, uh, that's, that's a good thing. Uh, and like I said, it's forty-six percent better than where we thought we would be, so that's a good thing. Um, another thing that we feel is, is a highlight is, um, the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, when all of those federal grants went away, the question for us, the challenge for us for several years has been, what are we going to do? We cannot lose connected kids. How are we going to do that? And, you know, we keep looking at grants because, you know, you just do. But, um, we were able, um, to reorganize the leadership in our youth development, youth service area, and of course, connected kids is a perfect example of youth development, um, to incorporate Linda's leadership in, in the areas beyond mentoring. And so she also focuses on the middle school youth center and youth service learning, working in partnership with Saraswanne McDonald, who has the K twelve connection there. And, uh, so that has given us the opportunity to stabilize connected kids. And that was a very positive thing for everybody. Um, so there's a graphic that shows you, um, how things had been and where the growth has taken us in the last couple of years. And as I said again, it's really because everybody did their part, and we really appreciate that, including the participants who like our programs and sign up for them, so that's a good thing, too. Um, as we look at our, our plan for this, uh, current year, um, we have three brand-new goals. And, uh, the first is one that I think you will continue to learn more about as you get into the year, and that is supporting the development of a collective impact initiative that will focus on supporting all Northfield children and youth from cradle to career. Collective impact is, there's been a lot of research done on it, very interesting work, um, that talks about, the, the way I, the simple way I describe it is, think about collaboration and the wonderful things that go on here in Northfield, and just ratchet it up a few more notches, because that's collective impact. And we have the opportunity through Healthy Community Initiative to, um, help provide leadership, to help provide support as a division in HCI's effort to bring this idea of collective impact to the community. How can we all work to ensure in all of our programs and all of our services and everything we do in the community that all children from cradle to career will see success, will be supported? And it's a natural, it's a beautiful fit for Healthy Community Initiative, and we are a major partner in the Healthy Community Initiative. So it just seemed right for us to say, we're going to dig in and make sure we can do everything we can to help make this successful. I feel like I'm kind of squishy about that because I don't understand all of it yet. Um, we have a session with our advisory council tomorrow evening where we're going to learn a whole lot more. Um, three people, Chris Estenson from the, uh, HCI board, Zach Pruitt, uh, the executive director of HCI, and Lisa Malika, who, um, is also a member of the, uh, HCI board and the vice chair of the Community Services Advisory Council, all went to a conference on this a couple of weeks ago in Milwaukee. And, uh, that was, uh, through HCI, and it was a great opportunity to spend time with the people from around the country who are making this collective impact work successful. And, uh, so we're very excited to, um, be able to work with, um, uh, it's kind of a replication project that's coming out of the STRIDE program in Cincinnati, um, very much tied to community schools, tied to collaboration, tied to collective impact. And so we will just continue to learn more and, and kind of feel our way. So it does feel a little squishy right now until we, we all get a better understanding of it. Um, the second, uh, objective that we're interested in is successfully implementing the changes in the early childhood programs to ensure that by two thousand twenty, all Minnesota children will be school-ready upon entering kindergarten. And you can see how collective impact and this objective, uh, go together very nicely. Um, we have already heard, you heard from Sarah Line last month, uh, that we're already seeing progress in the early childhood area. Uh, we heard last week from, um, a funder that it sounds like they will be funding, um, our outreach project. The Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation is interested in actually giving us another thousand dollars. So we made a couple of tweaks, sent them in today, and, um, you know, we understand that that's been approved. So that will give us even more steam to bring along these early childhood changes. Um, and then the third is, is really to allow us this year, allow the division, especially through the transition in leadership, uh, through the director position, to, um, look at how do we get on a continuous improvement routine for our childcare programs? In, in the country, in Minnesota, parents want to know that the childcare programs they're sending their kids to, uh, that those programs are endorsed, they are reviewed. And, and we looked at a lot of different programs and, and is it accreditation or is it continuous improvement? And what we've said is, let's spend more time looking at it this year with the idea of coming to some decision on what's the tool that will be used and, uh, having that decision come probably by next summer. Um, but it's really intended to, to work with the transition leadership and to give the staff and ventures and early ventures enough time to understand what are the expectations of these, um, quality indicators. So that's what that means. Uh, so, um, just, uh, to, to kind of get back to the site improvement question, which is always, what do you value? What drives your work? Uh, and, and, uh, those things for us as community educators, our lifelong learning, community involvement, maximizing resources and facilities, and building collaboration and partnership, yes, that's a connected kids match. That's who you're looking at there. And then some great pictures from some of our other programs. In the upper right is Project Able, which we do in a collaborative arrangement with Faribault Schools, uh, serving adults, uh, with disabilities. On the bottom right is, um, one of our adult enrichment classes, and because we maximize community resources, this class happens in a store downtown, because that's the best place to do that class. Um, and Linda, who was here earlier with connected kids, is an amazing knitter, and she learned to do that through our class. She's been taking our knitting classes for several years, so you never know where stuff's going to go. Um, bottom left is the community band, which has existed for, um, around forty years and, um, continues to be successful. They're working some, on some ideas for support, um, uh, in the future in terms of both financial support and some other resources, including new chairs. And so that group of community members is, is working on those ideas. And then the upper left is a picture from early childhood family. Yeah. So you've got a, a mom and, and a child, um, in one of our classes. Um, we believe parents are the first and most important teachers of their children, and that's what we do at ECFE. So that's where the division is going this year, and I've been pleased to be a part of this plan so far. So, um, any questions?
Well, congratulations on your completion of your fi, of your last continuous improvement plan.
I said that about the budgets, too.
This one's probably more fun than budgets. Um, I had a question. Exciting news about the Ventures childcare and, and looking at that. What is their current enrollment?
Um, we've got, it, the, the buildings vary. It's, it's kind of interesting. Uh, Greenbell is our smallest site, I believe. Uh, Bridgewater's pretty large, and so is Sibley. Um, I think at Kid Ventures, we're just maybe a hundred and twenty right now. Um, Early Ventures took on an addition, an additional classroom last year, and so we are full at about fifty.
Okay. And then, um, did I understand that you're taking this year to determine whether you do a, a continuous improvement model or seek some sort of accreditation?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and what we've found so far is that the accreditation process, um, has pretty much the same rubrics as the continuous improvement process, and so there's some different models that we're looking at there.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
No?
No?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Hannah. It's really exciting to see how much the, the vision has changed and then have that positive fund balance at the same time.
Yeah, when you've got that positive fund balance, you can then look to some very exciting new initiatives, and that's what makes it fun. And good work.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It looks like we are ready for the iPad Minute.
And here it is.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you again, sharing another exciting example. Uh, today's example is from, actually from today, and remember, I'm giving you all these rough cuts. There is no fancy video editing to make it look any better than what it is. So it's really authentic, which means sometimes, um, it's, well, all the time it's going to be authentic. So today, we're going to share with you a piece that we did, um, over at Bridgewater Elementary, who is going to be here is Hope Langston. She's one of our response to intervention coaches, and she is, uh, I would say, one of the most excited people in the district, I think, about the use of iPads specifically with students. So what you're seeing, we're transitioning from talking about the effectiveness with teachers and improving their efficiency to what we're starting to see as use for students. And I will let Hope talk to you in about, it's about two minutes, thirty-six seconds. Our iPad Minute today is with Hope Langston, one of the RTI coaches here at Bridgewater Elementary, and she's going to talk with us about how she's using, uh, iPads with students to perform some of the interventions.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, we are using the iPad today for a Math Fact Fluency Intervention for the fifth grader who needs help improving their Math Fact Fluency and Multiplication. So we have created, um, some flashcards using a standard protocol intervention called Incremental Math Fact Rehearsal. And what that is, is a sequential work through of known and unknown facts. The child is presented with one unknown fact a day, which for her is eight times four is fifty equals thirty-two. She then sequentially moves through a quiz where she must say the fact and then eight times four equals thirty-two, and then it will be followed by one of her known facts. Her known and unknown facts are tracked on this progress monitoring sheet. She rotates through known now, one known, unknown, two known facts, all the way through to the end of the, um, repetition, which is nine, uh, cycles of known and unknown facts. Every fourth time that she does this, uh, intervention, we will progress monitor with a baseline complete Math Fact assessment in the multiplication tables. She will then cross off the facts that she knows, and hopefully within seventeen days, she will know all of her multiplication aspects.
And Hope, how do you see the iPad assisting you in this intervention?
The iPad has actually increased the efficiency a huge amount because I do not need to hand-write the flashcards. They, they can be cut and pasted. Um, it tracks, helps me track for known and unknown facts by using the baseline intervention on the iPad, um, and it records and tracks for, um, certain correct, as well as the specifics facts he doesn't know. The teachers also will then take over this, uh, this, um, intervention in the classroom later this week, and they can then do it with their iPad right in the classroom.
Perfect. Very cool. Thanks for sharing with us today, Hope.
Anytime.
The thing that strikes me about that is that was really a video about response to intervention. If you really look at it, the iPad is transparent. You know, it happened to be the focus of this particular piece, but that's what our hope is for this technology, is that it really is transparent to the academic pursuits that we have with it. And in this case, we could have done some of the very similar things on a regular desktop computer, uh, but that's one location and one classroom or a specific location in a building. With this kind of technology, it can be in an eas, a soft chair, if that's what makes the student more comfortable, we can really adapt to what the student needs as opposed to where the equipment is. So I thought that was a good example, not only of how the iPad can be transparent, but also of the great work that's happening with response to intervention just two months into the school year. Are there any questions this evening? We're getting closer to a minute on the iPad Minute.
Julie?
I have a question, um, about the task forces. You know, we, we have heard in the past what those are, but I wanted you to, once again, tell us what those task forces are that I, you know, are, are working very hard right now. Um, and just give us an idea of how many people that is totally in, how often they're meeting?
Yep. The task forces are meeting monthly, roughly. We started in August, and about once a month, so we can't really do a whole lot more than that, especially at the beginning of the school year. We have a policy and procedure task force. We have a communication task force. We have a professional development task force. We have an app content and selection task force. And then finally, we have a technology task force, which is really the technical team, and we meet every week, so, uh, and let me tell you that iPad is on the agenda pretty much every week there. So those are the five groups. I would say if our, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Julie. I'm going to guess there's a total of twenty-five people across those four or five, uh, components. We try to keep it to five to seven people on each of those, and once in a while, we'll run into a situation where people can't make a meeting for various reasons. And the truth be told, we're really keeping a lot of eyes on what other districts are doing, and we're going to be creatively borrowing, it's like what we like, it's what we like to call lifting from other districts. But there are many other districts that have been, have learned some of these lessons over the last year. Many of our policy pieces at our last policy meeting, we've, we've got a couple of policy documents we could nearly adopt, uh, with some minor changes based upon local circumstances. But our professional development piece, like we've said the last time, we've now offered over thirty-five different iPad sessions that people could attend, um, from the beginning of this, from actually the beginning of August. The communication task force, this is it. This is one of our ideas from the communication task force was the iPad Minute. Each month, we have the blog that we're, we're updating about once every other week right now, typically in conjunction just after the school board meeting, we're updating that blog. So those, that's the kind of work that those task forces are doing.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Closer to a minute. We're getting there.
Thank you, Matt. All right. We have no items for individual action tonight. We are ready to move on to the consent grouping, and I'll remind board members of just a couple of, um, personnel items that we're folding into. that we're folding into the consent grouping. Is there anything anybody wishes to pull from the consent grouping? Do I have a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ann, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Host, motion carries. There are no items for information.
Again, we're trying to tailor this, knowing that for the next two months, it's going to be really heavy on discussion and reports with school improvement plans in each of the different buildings. And also PLC presentations in each of the next two months to talk about PLC implementation.
Very good, all right. We will have that to look forward to. Our future meetings, remember, the next meeting is a Tuesday, November thirteenth at seven, and then our usual Monday, November twenty-sixth. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Jeff? Seconded by John, always in favor of adjourned meeting, say aye. Host, ready to adjourn.